Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Welcome to the Blue Earth County Board of Commissioners Agenda Meeting of July 12, 2022. At this point, you stand for the Pledge Allegiance to the Plaid.
The Pledge Allegiance to the Plaid, in the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a little agenda review?
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda today.
Move to approve the agenda? I move by Vance to approve the agenda?
Second.
Second by Kip. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed carries. Okay, next on the docket here is our small city revolving loan application. Mr. John Hollerick and Ms. Amber Dunkinson, come forward.
Right up in front here, John.
Yeah, you're not bashful, I know.
Good morning.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you. All right, well, we are here tonight, today, excuse me, to request approval of the small cities revolving loan for Creekside Ag in Mapleton. They have received a small business city and county loan in the past, and have paid that off successfully. They're looking to add a new building, new warehouse, to their facility after having a business changeover. The older, excuse me, the business owner retired and sold his Creekside Ag, the seed business, to younger individuals that had been working for him. So it's kind of exciting to see a business kind of change hands in Mapleton, and they are looking to expand and update the facilities and their business and continue to grow their business. And I think they're looking for the, they requested the $75,000 max city and county small business loan, and the city at our last meeting approved that loan after going through the paperwork, and so today we're just looking for the county's approval to move forward with that.
All right, I would move approval.
I'll second then.
Second by Vance. Any further discussion?
Just very exciting for the city of Mapleton. It's just nice to keep that asset in that area.
Absolutely.
Very important. So it's nice when we can use some of this money and help that gap financing, so thanks for you guys for supporting it.
Absolutely.
Thank you. You're always moving forward too in Mapleton.
We try to. We try to.
Anybody else? All right, okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed carries. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Long drive for a couple minutes. We love seeing ya.
Appreciate it.
But it's well worth it.
Yes, it is.
All right, next we have an agenda transfer jurisdiction hearing for County Ditch 46. We got Ryan, Craig. Oh yeah, we got a bunch.
Get your recliners on.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Ryan.
Go through the jurisdictional documents for County Ditch 46, transfer jurisdictional rights. I have a quick little memo. Blue Earth County Ditch 46 originally existed in Sections 9, 10, 11, 14, 15, and 16 of Mankato Township. Much of its original portion of County Ditch 46 is now known as Madison Avenue. A petition for transfer of jurisdiction under Minnesota Statute 103E.812 was received by Property and Environmental Resources staff on April 28th of 2022 from the city of Mankato. A signed agreement has also been received from the city of Mankato staff. Charles J. Brando with ISG has also delivered his engineer's transfer report. All documents have been received by Property and Environmental Resources Department. At today's hearing, we are seeking the approval of the petition transfer of jurisdiction to the city of Mankato. And I have a couple notices. Notices were sent on June 30th to landowners. We also did a notice of public affidavit in the Mankato Free Press on June 14th, June 21st, and June 28th, and also outside of our historic courthouse building here. That's about all I have.
Okay.
Ryan?
We need a motion and a second to accept the affidavit.
Submoved.
Second.
Second by Kip. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed carries. All right. We now have the engineer, I guess Mr. Chuck Brandle, discuss his transfer report for the drainage authority.
All right, good morning. So this is actually the third report we've done on County Ditch 46, transferring portions of the system back to the city. CD 46 is in Mankato Township and the city of Mankato, originally provided drainage for about 370 acres. It was mostly set up to drain County Road 17 or Madison Avenue. But it was built in 1916. There was 16,000 feet of pipe ranging from 20 inch to 6 inch, and then through the development of the city of Mankato, portions have been taken over. So the watershed map, which is a handout, the red line shows the original watershed boundary, and most of the system has already been taken over, and it's been replaced. It's been replaced with storm sewer, so it's, the system isn't there anymore physically, but there still is a county ditch there. So just a little bit of history, 1973, 2,000 feet was taken over, abandoned and rerouted. 2013, the tile between Victory Drive and Hafner Drive was transferred to the city of Mankato. 2019, the tile between Hafner Drive and County Road 12 was transferred while CASA 17 was upgraded, and now the petition is to take over the remainder of the system. By statute, the city or municipality can petition for this transfer as long as it lies within the boundaries of the city. Pretty straightforward. This last piece on the map is currently still part of the system. It's proposed to be taken over, and that will allow for development in the city to expand and use storm sewer. It also, if a landowner within the system wanted to petition for a repair, it eliminates that need for a repair, since it wouldn't really be practical, since we have a public road system. Again, the area in red is what we're proposing to transfer over, and that would transfer the entire system over to the city. Again, like I said, it allows the city of Mankato to be in control of their drainage system within the city, and that way they can use MS4 requirements and other things to hook up and have a properly designed storm system. And it wouldn't really be feasible if a landowner petitioned to repair the system. So we recommend the transfer. All the lands are within the city, they're all a developing area, and it would ease in the planning with the development of CASA 17 in the city of Mankato. That's our report.
Thank you, Chuck.
Thank you, Chuck. At this time, we've opened up the hearing for public comment and portion, and individuals wishing to make comments about the proposed petition for transfer jurisdictions for County Ditch 46 may do so at this time, and so please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record, and we only ask that you limit your comments to no more than three minutes. Anybody wishing to speak on County Ditch 46? Anyone wishing to speak on County 46 on the public hearing? And again, I will do it for the third time, if anybody wishing to make any comments about Ditch 46, come forward. If not, we'll bring it back to the board. Is there any additional comments or questions on, from the board members?
At this time? I'd move approval.
Yep, that's what we're asking for?
I'll second that.
It's been moved, moved by Kip and seconded by Vance. After hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed carries. Now, the County Ditch 46 public hearing is now adjourned. Moving right along to County Ditch 50. Welcome everybody here for County Ditch 50 acceptance hearing and for contracted repair work to the system, and we'll have Mr., at this point, Ryan Henneker to give comments regarding jurisdictional documents for the hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll start again with a memo. Purpose of an acceptance hearing is determine if the contractor has completed the work in accordance with the plans and specifications. When a drainage authority accepts a contract, it will order the payment of the remaining balance due on the contract. The acceptance also starts the three-year warranty period for tile work and a one-year warranty period for any open ditch work. Today, we are asking the drainage authority to accept the findings in order, approving the engineer's acceptance report. Also, landowners were notified by via mail on June 30th. The affidavit publication was also made on July 1st in the Mankato Free Press, and notice was also given outside of our historic courthouse building. That is all I have for jurisdictional documents.
Thanks, Ryan. At this point, then, we'll now have the appointed engineer, Mr. Chuck Brandle, discuss the acceptance report.
Mr. Chair, I'll move the documents.
Sorry, yeah, move it first, yep.
I'll second.
Second by Kevin.
Into the legal record.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed carries. Excuse me, now then, we'll have Chuck give the acceptance report.
All right. Good morning again. Since we have three of these, some of this information will be repeated. I'll try to go through that fairly quickly, but like Ryan said, we're here for the acceptance report for County Ditch 50. This was a repair to Branch 13. Is my slideshow not showing up? Hang on. There we go. All right, there we go. So County Ditch 50 is about a 4,800 acre watershed. There were repairs completed a few years ago, two portions of the tile and the open ditch, Branch 13. Landowners expressed concerns that the tile was coming out of the ground, was very shallow and needed repair. It was televised, found to be in disrepair, and the project was bid and awarded to Precision Contracting. The branch shown on this map, the orange line is the original alignment of the main line and then branch P of Branch 13, or lateral P of Branch 13. It was repaired as an 18 inch, and then a 12 inch, and then the lateral was a 12 inch. We did move the alignment slightly to the west to gain cover on the line, because there was a low area where the line was almost coming out of the ground. So the bids were posted April of 2021, opened in May of 2021. Precision Farm Drainage was awarded the project in May of 2021. We had a pre-construction meeting in June of last year. Construction started in July, and most of the work was completed by September, and then there were some final punch list items, and then now we're at the closeout hearing. Here's a few pictures of the construction, primarily of the 18-inch tile. They did have some very poor soils, but we knew that, having worked in this area before, and had accounted for some aggregate material to go underneath the pipe in a large portion of the system. Don't know if this drone footage will play. Nope. But we did fly a drone over the entire system after it was constructed to help verify damages and make sure everything was, at least at that time, working and in order. We do recommend completion of the project. The estimate at the time of the engineer's report was 193,832. The bid from Precision was 199,156. We had no change orders. We did have a few overruns on some rock and some tile connections, so we have a total construction cost of 204,465. The final retainage was 25,14374. So we recommend approval and payment of that. We did put together an as-built that shows the existing, or the new proposed system and the existing system that is to be abandoned, and then we also put together damages showing the areas where construction occurred and where damages should be paid to each landowner, and that is part of the handout, breaking down by each 40, the damages with a total damages of about 12 acres on the project. And then with the acceptance hearing, the new line, which is shown in green, would be the new Branch 13. The orange line would officially be abandoned and not part of the system anymore, but we did hook it up in spots. So we recommend approval and payment for County Ditch 50.
All right, thank you, Chuck, for that report. And now at this time, we will open this hearing up to the public comment portion, and those individuals wishing to make comments regarding about the contracted repair work for Ditch, County Ditch 50, may do so at this time. We'll ask that you please come to the podium and state your name and address, and for the record, we'll ask you to limit your comments to no more than three minutes. Okay, anybody, last time, anyone wishing to make comments for the contracted repair work for County Ditch 50?
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yep.
I spoke with a landowner yesterday that is unable to make it via phone conference, and she stated that there was a wooden post that was removed by the contractor. I told her I would make it part of the public record that we spoke of it. I have spoken with the contractor, and it is in the works to be read.
Right, thank you.
Just wanted to make that part of the record.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ryan. Is there any other additional questions or comments from the board members regarding this, then? If there are no extra, I should say additional comments from the public, at this time, we can bring it back to the board.
I would move to approve.
And moved by Vance.
Second.
Second by Kevin. Any discussion?
I just have one clarification. The abandonment's done, then, or we got to do the abandonment yet?
I would make the abandonment as part of the...
Part of this order.
Part of this order.
Okay. Just for clarification, when you do a repair, it's assumed that the old tile is abandoned, because it is to repair. But it's not always abandoned, so that's why I'm double checking.
Double checking.
Ben, they're done that. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, good. So the public comment then covers the abandonment as well, then, so we've got that.
The public hearing would cover the abandonment portion of the part.
Yes.
Okay.
And it was part, if I may, it was part of the report.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure, I thought, for some reason, I thought we had to do a separate step, but as long as we got it all done. Yeah, it's all part of the, all right, thank you.
That's good for the clarification, all right, then. You have it in front of us, and we have a motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed carries. All right, thank you, gentlemen. Continue. Next, we have the judicial ditch acceptance of the hearing and our improvement for judicial ditch 14. And I welcome everyone to judicial ditch 14 acceptance hearing for contracted repair work to the system. We now have Mr. Craig Osterson read jurisdictional documents for this hearing.
Okay, this is in regards to judicial ditch 14 acceptance hearing. Purpose of the acceptance hearing is to determine if the contractor has completed the work in accordance with the plans and specifications. When a drainage authority accepts a contract, it will order the payment of the remaining balance due on the contract. The acceptance also starts a three-year warranty period for the tile work and a one-year warranty period for open ditch work. Today, we are asking the drainage authority to accept the findings in order, approving the engineer's acceptance report. As far as jurisdictional documents, landowners were mailed notifications on June 30th, and it was advertised in the Free Press.
All right, thank you, Craig.
I'm moved to accept the affidavits and the legal record.
It's been moved by Kevin.
Second.
Second by Vance, except all applications jurisdictional and book of work. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, so we now have then our appointed engineer, Mr. Chuck Brandle, to discover, to discuss his acceptance report for the drainage authority.
Chuck? Hang on one. Trying to get this to work again. All right. All right, so Blue Earth JD 14, let's zoom in. This is an improvement, where CD 50 was a repair, so this was a petition improvement. The improvement watershed is shown in red, and the improvement improved portions of the main line and Branch 3 and 4, leaving Branch 1, lateral A, and Branch 2 in place. The timeline on the improvement was approved back in 2020. Bids were posted in January of 2021, bid in February. Chambers Excavating and Trucking was the low bidder and was awarded the project in March of 2021. We had a pre-construction meeting on April 5th, and they started immediately and were substantially complete by the end of 2021, with some punch list items that were done this spring and completed. Through the project, here is just some pictures of the outlet for JD 14, some of the tile installation. We did hit some very poor soils along the main line. They really slowed them down, some real sandy wet soils. And then we also had a directional boring under County Road 11. Let's see if I can get this to play now. So standard for our projects is that when they're completed, we do a drone survey just to make sure we get the damages right, and you can kind of see from the air if you've missed any connections, if there's any wet spots. It also has to rain for that to happen, but, so we did a drone survey to verify the damages, and I do, this is available if landowners want to see it. I do have a link that we can share with landowners if they want to see the condition of the system and the ground after it's completed. Since Ditch 14 was an improvement, we have a more extensive closeout hearing to meet the requirements of the statute, putting together the contract, as-built damages, officially abandoning portions of the system. The original estimate at the time of the final engineer's report was 481,000. The bid was 455,000 from Chambers. We did have some minor change orders, but we also had some cost savings with connections and a few other things, and were $30 over what the original bid was for the approval. So even with the poor soils, we did have to use a lot of rock in that area, but the rest of the system went fairly smoothly. We televised the entire system, and there were a few areas where they had to come back and do some repairs. Those have been completed. Currently, the contractor's been paid 432,59532. They're owed 22,76818. They have signed the final pay request. ISG put together an as-built of the system. The as-built includes where we connected the old line in, where we had cross connections, and where we found private tile. So that can become the record of the new system if it's accepted. We also put together damage maps showing when we damaged crops or if there were no crops, and broke that down by each landowner by 40s, and we have approximately 35 acres of damages that we're recommending payment for. Along with the acceptance, recommend that the existing main line and Branch 3 and 4 be abandoned, and the new main line and new branches be accepted as the new official JD 14, as part of the JD 14 system. So we recommend approval. Again, this is if landowners do have comments and there's anything we need to address, that's the purpose of the hearing.
Thank you, Chuck, for that report. And now at this time, we will open this hearing up to the public comment portion, and those individuals wishing to make a comment can please come forward and may do so at this time. We just only ask that you give your name and state your name and address, and then we ask that you limit your time to three, no more than three minutes, so. Is there anybody wishing to make public comment on judicial ditch 14? Go ahead, sir. Come forward to the podium and give your name and address.
Weston Griffiths, 201 East Robinson, Lake Crystal. In the area, on my farm, they had to do some repairs late last fall, and they weren't able to end up leveling it until this spring, and it's pretty rough. I feel cultivated in multiple times, but there are a few spots where there were some dips and stuff that were too deep to even plant through. I was wondering if there's anything we can do about that.
Chuck, you want to address it first?
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. We could, a couple things, we could either continue the hearing and have the contractor do the work, or we could, it could be called warranty work. We still have a three-year warranty.
And a bond.
And we would require the contractor to go out and do the work. If they don't, we'd get somebody else to do it and charge them for it. We could also hold a small amount back, close out the hearing, and pay them later. Again, the part of the purpose of the hearing is if there's anything like that that we weren't aware of, is to make sure that we address that. It's how big of an area do you think it is?
Well, there's, where they did this repair, they never really got it leveled out, and then there's these spots that are maybe five feet in diameter, a foot and a half, two feet deep, that, you know, you can't really drive a planter and stuff across.
Yeah, I could maybe find your property, but we could take a look at it.
There's a couple of them, and then there's a mound where, you know, you're expecting it to be somewhat blended in with the ground around it, but it's, you know, just pretty much a big mound off to one side and another area.
So half a day with a small dozer and...
Yeah, I mean, it just, you know, it was bad conditions. They did those repairs, and they had it piled up, and that froze, and it never thawed out, you know, almost planting time, and they, you know, it was wet, and it just wasn't very good conditions, though. I like to wait until after the crop is off.
I would agree to not have crop damages, so. So we could include that as warranty work, or you could continue the hearing and close it either way. When you look at a half a day with the grading and chisel plow, you're probably, you know, $1,000 or less for a cost if we had to hire somebody outside of the project.
What's your experience in getting something like that done under warranty, Chuck, in the past?
It's been very good with the contractors that I've worked with.
Is this a reasonable contractor?
Yeah, they're local. We had one last year. It was a different contractor. They had three spots that came up, they came and did them. It was not a big deal, so.
I'm comfortable with that.
Okay. So we're looking into to warranty work on, all right. And I guess can I get a motion to accept the provided draft findings and the work completed contrast judicial just...
Mr. Chair, do you maybe want to call for any additional public comment? Just to make sure.
Yeah, do we have any more public comment regarding the 14? Okay, and hearing none, I'll bring it back to the board for the action then.
I'll move approval.
Yeah.
With the conditions outlined.
Second. So, moving second. Discussion. All those in favor, that signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Thank you, Chuck. Make sure you two get connected, so you know exactly where it is.
If you want to hang on until after the next hearing.
We have ditch 17, and we'll forward to that, Chuck.
Okay. Well, start with jurisdictional documents.
Yep. Craig to do.
Yeah. JD-17 is improvement. This is the acceptance hearing for JD-17 improvement. The purpose of an acceptance hearing is determine if the contractor has completed the work in accordance with the plans and specifications. When a drainage authority accepts a contract, it will order the payment of the remaining balance due on the contract. The acceptance also starts a three-year warranty period for tile work and a one-year warranty for open ditch work. Today, we're asking the Drainage Authority to accept the findings and order approving the engineer's acceptance report. Again, notices are mailed to all landowners, which apparently, judging by the number of landowners in 17, they all got the notice, and it was published in the Free Press.
I'll move to accept the affidavits and the legal record.
Second.
Kevin moves, and second. Okay. Accepted for the record. Here, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. All right. And now, I have the appointed engineer, Chuck Brandle, discuss the acceptance report.
All right. Thank you again for JD-17. This was an improvement project that abandons the entire JD-17 system and replaces it with a new system. Here's the watershed map. The JD-17 system had many, many small private tile that were public, but really, in reality, they were almost like private tile. This system was televised, reviewed, and in many cases, it was falling apart. So, landowners petitioned for an improvement to replace the entire system. There was some rerouting and a few other branches that we moved and found more efficient ways to drain the property. It's a fairly small watershed, but with a lot of tile, so we were trying to be as efficient as possible from a cost standpoint. The outlet was replaced as a 24-inch main. All tiles were connected that were found throughout the watershed. The existing system was connected at property lines and then disconnected from property to property. There was a proposal to do storage at the outlet of the system. At the time, it was not cost-effective, and we couldn't find any grant dollars to do it, so it wasn't completed at the time of the project. There is an as-built map of the entire system. You can see it does kind of weave all around, but we have connected all of the system and all of the existing tile that were there. The contractor was Groundworks. Bids were posted in September of 2020. They were awarded in October of 2020. Made a pre-construction meeting in March. Construction started in June of 2021. Most of the work was completed by September of 2021. The system was televised. There were a few areas that were found that needed to be repaired. Those repairs were completed this spring. Thus, we're at the closeout hearing, and all the work has been completed. There's a few pictures of construction. Again, a little bit of a theme, we hit some poor wet soils, and there was a little bit of an area that they struggled. We did have rock included in the bid, so we were able to work through that, and that's why we have it in there, because we know we hit poor soils here in Blue Earth County. Just a few other pictures of how connections look like, some of the tile installation, road crossings, and then some of our televising. You can see we found a friend in the camera, which is typical, or in the pack.
Yeah, I love it.
Yep. Here's just a picture of how one of the private connections were made. There's drone footage of the entire damaged area, which I can share with landowners. Maybe I'll speed up to the middle of the system. Can you see, this was taken last fall after most of the construction was done, and we've got a pretty good documentation of where the contractor was, and they stayed within their boundaries pretty close. The report was completed. The original estimate was 723,000. The contract with Groundworks was 712,860.14. Again, we had a few change orders for some added connections and a few other items, some cost savings. We over, we estimated a lot of connections on this system, because in case the original system wasn't exactly where we thought it was, those ran under, so we're about $5,000 under what the original contract was. So, the final amount for the contract was 707,768.16. We've paid 667,000 for 30.25, and the contractor's owed $40,337.91. We're recommending payment to the contractor. They have signed the final pay request. We do have an as-built for the whole system. I already have one request from a landowner to get some of those maps for their property. There are a lot of tile out there, and we, everything we've found, we have shown, so we do have a good documentation of that. In the handout, there is all of the damages that occurred during construction, and then, again, that's broken down by each 40 for each landowner. We had a total damages of about 68 acres. And again, we're abandoning the entire system except for lateral L, which was repaired, but that is included in the as-built. So we do have abandoning the entire system, and then the new system is the entire new If there's any questions, we recommend approval of the acceptance and closing out the project. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Chuck. Now, at this time, we'll open the hearing up to the public comment portion. And those individuals wishing to make comment about the contracted repair work judicial ditch 17 may do so at this time. We're asking you to come to the podium, state your name and address, and for the record, and also, we ask you to limit your time to no more than three minutes. If anybody wishes to... Okay, go ahead, sir. Give your name and address.
Thank you, gentlemen. My name is Russ Haber, 1412 Cherry Street in New Orleans. I'm representing the Haber Farm. I have to apologize, my voice is acting a little goofy today, plus I have a vision problem, so I don't see this that well. Three things I had in mind to bring up, and it might be a little late. When they put the line in from, for lack of knowledge, the Camus Farm, which is north of our farm, and I think it's the Minneapolis group that owns it now, goes down north to south, and the original plan years ago was...
I'm just going to look over your shoulder to make sure.
Was supposed to cross the road into the 40 acres we have on the other side. And I was told, when they were working on this run from north to south, that they would take care of that. I was out there in the field, and he says, yes, we will put that over, so it goes up to the county road. Well, that never happened. For some reason or other, that was eliminated, and I don't know why. And our whole area on this side of the county road is not covered by this county ditch, which it originally was on the old system. For some reason or other, they didn't do it. The other thing I have in mind is that there's 15, I think 15 drainage, I call them drainage holes. They have a yellow marker with...
Drop intakes is what we call.
Okay, drop intake. They're sticking out there, two feet above the ground, and there's 15 of them in our property, and I don't know, and I was told then that you could have those lowered. I hear that some other farmers have eliminated them completely and put it underground, so you wouldn't have, wouldn't have that thing sticking out two feet in the area where you're going to work and try to do your crop. Now, why ours is left two feet, 15 of them, it's kind of, looks like yellow sunflowers out there. It's all over the place, and the renter, he's going to have to farm around them, or they're going to lower them. I don't know. I was told that they would lower them so that they wouldn't stick out so far, but you still can't farm over it. And so, they said they would take care of that, and that hasn't been taken care of either. We still have the two-foot yellow sunflower sitting out there, and I guess that's all I really have. I had one thing I wanted to mention. I know it's probably too late to say. I wish you had some water around here. Most of the land, there's six of them, that drain into this system is in my property land. In other words, all this water is coming from, starting from the Minneapolis group all the way around through where Bill James and Sargent's and all that, that all drains into my farm system. That's a lot of water coming into just one system, and then the outlet is way down by where the Hudson Farm is, so.
Mr. Chair, it is three minutes.
Those are the three things I had in mind and wanted to bring up, but I don't know what to go from there.
Thank you for your comments. I guess three minutes is up.
Do you want me to wait to address those more comments, or?
We can address them now.
Okay. Just while they're fresh on the mind, yeah. The branch that you were discussing, that was not part of the petition project. We did reroute that to the south, but we did connect the old branch, you can see on my screen, on the west side of the road, so it is connected in, and there's another connection further north. So there's a tile through the Haber Farm, and then a connection on the west side. So that line is connected in and is still functioning. For the drop intakes, that was something that we did talk about at the pre-con, that if you wanted those lowered, talk to us or our inspector. The message must not have gotten through that you wanted them lowered. So that is something that was part of the contract, to lower those when requested after the system was televised. So that would be some additional work that we'd have to do to lower those.
Well, the one farm, and I don't know which one, I was told, had them completely lowered so they could farm over them.
Yep.
Right?
We bury them two feet. We have coordinates on these intakes. We can come back and check the condition of the line and dig them up. They're there for either where intakes were previously, or we need, about every 1,500 feet, we need access so we can televise it. So that's why they were put in.
Well, can that be left open so it takes water?
Yes.
Because some of these areas where this line goes through, I wish it was a little farther, 100 feet one way or the other, than would be on the lower part of what?
We could meet with your renter and talk through if there's some that you want to keep and some that would be lowered. There is a bid item for lowering them, so this was anticipated. We just didn't get word that...
Well, you didn't get word?
We didn't get word from you that you wanted them all lowered or not, so.
So that's something you can still try to deal with, Chuck.
We could still deal with that, yeah.
So, in other words, if I say, and the renter says, I don't want them sticking up at all, I want them all below.
Yep, we have a bid item for that.
But when you lower them, they don't take on water, do they?
No.
So actually, you're getting rid of something that could drain.
Yes. Yep. Some landowners want them, others want them buried.
Yeah, that's what I'm concerned about. If you bury it, no water goes in, and I think I'd like some water, but I'd like them lower so they just wouldn't be sticking out there. Not that it makes it pretty or anything, but just so the renter, maybe the renter says, I don't care, but maybe next year we get different.
Yeah, you reach out to the renter, Chuck.
We'll reach out to the renter.
Yeah, you guys get together and fix this.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, Chuck. Are there any other additional comments regarding ditch 17? Any additional comments? If not, return it to the, back to the Drainage Authority. Any additional comments from the board?
Just a point of clarification for Chuck. You think this is something to be either covered under the original contract or under warranty?
It wouldn't be warranty. It was...
Part of the contract.
It was part of the contract as a bid item.
But it hasn't been done, so it probably is not put in this, so it'd be another cost to that.
Yeah. What I would, just backing up, to lower retainage for the contractor to below 5%, we have to have this hearing. We could lower the retainage for the contractor, hold a smaller amount of retainage. This isn't a lot of work. That way, they're, we're holding $40,000, and they've completed all the work that they should have, but hold maybe a small amount of retainage. We could continue the hearing to a date once that work's completed. Or we could close out the project and do an additional contract and do it as an additional item as a repair. That'd be another way that we could do that.
Just so I'm clear, then...
Kind of giving you two options.
Yeah, and I get that, but that's what I'm not getting, is that you told me it's part of the, lowering of them was part of the contract, so if they didn't get lowered, we didn't get billed for them, I'm assuming?
You did not.
So, really, by withholding any retainage is almost irrelevant, because they didn't get paid to do, they didn't do the work, so they didn't get paid for the work.
Correct.
So, it's really not part of the retainage. Am I following you correctly?
I was just, a motivation to have the contractor.
Yeah, no, I get it. I get it. I just wanted to make sure I was clear, because this is going to be an extra cost.
It's an extra cost.
Over what we've done here.
Yep. We estimated that we'd close half of them, and as we went through, landowner said, I want that lowered. We just didn't get the word.
So that was a piece item?
Yes.
Okay. And I can, I understand that, and I don't have a problem with holding a little bit of the retainer, but whatever your professional opinion is, this is another good company again. And if they're going to get paid to do them, especially, I know it's a small job. They don't like to deal with them, and we don't want to do that till fall anyways.
Correct.
Mr. Chair, I may recommend that we wouldn't clean up the acceptance hearing today and pay that out as separate repair scene, as you alluded to, it hasn't been performed. The work is not done.
These guys are good guys. They'll get the job done.
This is above and beyond what the contract is doing today.
I think that's my recommendation also, that we'll get them back out there to do the repair.
If it was somebody you thought you were having problems with and getting stuff done, but these guys do good work, so.
The system's functioning. This doesn't affect the system.
And we might get out there, and Russ might get out there, and his renter might say, yeah, just leave them all the way they are, so.
Yep.
I don't want to be holding up money now for someone that would like to get paid, so.
One other thing I'd like to mention is, are you talking about if we did something, it would be done right away, or would it wait until the fall?
We would wait until the fall.
Got you.
All right. If there's any other questions from the board, Mr. Chair, I would entertain a motion, or I would move approval of the acceptance hearing.
Second. Been moved and seconded. And ditch 17 there. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Okay. Thanks, Chuck. We also have...
Thank you.
Some repairs.
Repairers.
We're getting two more yet. First is a repair report for County Ditch 65, which is located in Judson Township. We have a couple tile lines over there that are rather full of sediment. Instead of instantly just replacing things, I'm going to try a little different avenue of using a jetting machine, a powerful jetting machine, to flush it. We're hoping to try and do this in the fall of 2022 after harvest. I have a cost estimate at this time of $16,000 to do this. Yes, that is high, but not having a whole lot of experience in doing this, we thought we would rather go high than low. So I'm asking for approval of the repair report for County Ditch 65.
So moved. Second? Second by Vance. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
One more for County Ditch 78. Also a repair report. We have a portion of subsurface tile that needs to be repaired that goes to an open ditch underneath the township road. I have physically received an estimate from Stevens-Bobcaton Backhoe for $13,468.8 for this repair work. He's very knowledgeable, works in that area. Seeking approval for that repair estimate.
So moved. It's been moved by Kevin. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, 78 repair. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. All right. That concludes. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Chuck, thank everybody.
Chuck, you connect with the two people at Con...
I was just having fun here yet.
Norwood wants another public hearing. I'll move to recess.
Move to recess.
Yep. How do you just put it on?
Recession. All in favor, yes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. All right. We're on recess.
Nope. Nancy's up for recessing for the EDA.
Oh, are they? I'm thinking of, yeah. Here.
No break yet.
No break yet.
Not yet.
That's good. Well, that's why, yeah.
So you have to call this meeting to order.
Nancy, you want to come? Uh, oh, I have to call the Blue Earth County Economic Development Authority meeting to order. And if Nancy has come up forward and give us, uh, uh, all the good things you have.
Mr. Chair, the first item is the agenda review, though, so I will report that there are no changes to the agenda.
Have somebody move the agenda review, please? So moved.
Second.
Okay. Approved. All right. I guess then we do have the minutes. Do we need that?
I'll move the minutes.
That's Kevin. Kip moves the minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second. Oh, there we go. Yeah, okay, there we go. Uh, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And it's approved. Okay. Uh, then we, we need the resolution here first, too. Where we got?
That's what she'll present.
Is that?
That's what you have, right?
Yeah.
So I can present that resolution?
You got to present it, so...
Yep. So today we have, um, a housing tax credit application for Walnut Towers.
Can I just ask who your helper is, Nancy?
Yeah, I want you to introduce your, uh...
Yes, and this is Dan Walsh.
Dan, welcome, Dan.
And he works with Trellis, and he will be, um, giving you more information about the project, what they're doing, what they're planning to do for Walnut Towers. And, um, what they're doing is they put together a tax credit application that they'll be submitting to Minnesota Housing to, um, receive additional funding to do some renovations to preserve Walnut Towers and preserve the Section Eight tenant-based assistance there. And as you know, with tax credit projects, they do come for local support, and so they're coming to you today for local support for this project. Um, they're looking at six hundred and fifty thousand dollars to support the project. They did go to the city council last night, and the city council did approve a hundred thousand in CDBG and two, two hundred and seventy-five thousand in ARP monies. And so they'll be coming to the county then to ask for another two hundred and seventy-five thousand in ARP monies for that total of six hundred and fifty thousand to support that project. And they're planning to do some major renovations. I'll let him go through that. Um, I know they're looking at approximately sources and uses of two million, or twenty million dollars. And, um, we'd be asking you to adopt a resolution to support this project with two hundred and seventy-five thousand in ARP monies, and, um, knowing that the city put in the hundred thousand and the two hundred and seventy-five thousand in ARP. So I'll turn it over to Dan, and he can talk to you more about, um, Walnut Towers and the intentions of Trellis.
Thank you, Nancy.
Dan?
Good morning, uh, commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm considering our request. I'll do just a short intro of our organization and then, and then give some more details on our goals for the project. So Trellis is a nonprofit developer focused on multifamily affordable housing. Uh, we've been around for nearly thirty years. Uh, we're the owner of fifty-one properties and, and just over four thousand units. Over half of our units have project-based Section Eight rent assistance, uh, like is at, at Walnut Towers. We only have, uh, properties in Minnesota. Most of our portfolio is in the Twin Cities metropolitan area, but we have a, a number scattered throughout Minnesota. Most recently, we, um, converted an old school in New Ulm, uh, to be affordable housing apartments. This would be, this will be our first, uh, property in Mankato. Uh, so a little bit about the project. Um, I, I guess I first want to mention that in some ways, I think the physical improvements will be the easier part, even though it is very difficult. Um, the more important work will be just to, to build the, the resident community life and ensure that the residents there are getting the proper support and connections they need to thrive. Um, Trellis management, we have our own management company, will have full-time office and maintenance staff, and we plan to add a half-time services and activities coordinator to work with all the residents and connect them with community resources and activities. Um, we've been talking with Lynette Ayers from Disability Services, uh, at Blue Earth County, and also Andrew Peach, and, and working towards partnering with them, uh, to provide more direct services to those disabled residents that need more intensive supports. Um, there's a lot of good work happening with the city and county. Um, and as we are new to the city, we're, we're still listening and learning and building those connections, uh, but our goal is to figure out how to best serve the residents. So, uh, turning to the renovation activities, we are doing things, uh, kind of up a list of priorities. First are repairs, uh, then there's asset protection, then there's building performance, and then resident livability improvements. It's ninety thousand dollars a, a unit is what we're proposing, so it's a very substantial renovation. Repairs include, uh, new windows, new window panels, new roof, uh, new elevator, and then replacing the original plumbing system, including the waste stacks, uh, outside parking lot, mill and overlay, sidewalks, landscaping, all of those types of things. Asset protection, um, again, roof, roof and window, but we're also going to be replacing the mechanical system, and they have, uh, electrical panels that are discontinued and, uh, not the safest, so we will be replacing all the electrical panels. And then the sustainability upgrades include new air conditioning units and then, uh, replacing the mechanical system with a high-efficiency model. And then planned livability improvements include additional lighting and security, and then re, uh, configuring the first floor common areas. Uh, we're, the, the management office is currently out of the way on the second floor, so we're going to relocate it down on the first floor, visible, near the entrance, near the main path. We plan to add a fitness center and a computer lab, uh, and then re, sort of, re-renovating and upgrading the, the community room and kitchen. So the money to do all this will, will come primarily from our, um, our application to the state this Thursday, um, and we appreciate, uh, your consideration of the local support. Um, it's a very, the state application's extremely competitive, and, uh, these local funds greatly improve the competitiveness of the application in addition to being real money that will go towards the renovation. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Any questions?
I just had one. I might have missed it. Hull, timeframe?
Oh, yeah, I didn't mention that. So, uh, so we are near the beginning of the process, and, and the funding from the state is awarded once annually. So applying this week, the funds will be awarded, uh, this winter, and then we would move to really start the full design process and close on the financing. And so the construction really wouldn't start until this time next year.
Okay.
Hopefully earlier in spring, but that's the timeline.
Are the awards guaranteed?
The state awards are not at this point. They're, it's a competitive application. They, they get more applications than they do, um, have funding, but we think it's a very competitive project, um, in addition to...
But it's an amazing project.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, and it's well-needed. It's great for the low-income individuals and special needs that, that, for the city of Mankato. So, no, it's a great project.
Yeah.
So, and we would know by...
No, they, they haven't said when they'll do selections. Uh, last year it was December. This year we're hoping for November.
November, okay. All right. Yeah, it's a very good project. When you read up, um, appreciate the work advancing. Uh, we have it. Um, yeah, questions in? Yeah, okay. We have motion?
So moved.
Advance, just moves and...
I'll second.
Okay, I'll second, okay.
And I just, I just want to make a comment, Mr. Chair, as Nancy came and talked about this at the work session. We had a great discussion. You did a great job there. Appreciate that. So we're, we're familiar with the program and good, good job.
It had a nice write-up in the Free Press, too. That was nice. And it looked, and it looked really positive. I think it's a, it's really a positive thing to, and, and to keep it down so, so folks can, can really afford their, you know, where they're living. And plus having an upgraded, you know, um, because no matter how good the building is after a certain amount of time, it's going to need to be upgraded. So this is positive, and, and, uh, like it's stated in the Free Press, you know, that area would be primed to have high-end apartments put up there. And, uh, I really appreciate you, you working on keeping it where it's at, so thank you.
Mr. Chair and commissioners, I might just add that, uh, this is a part of, uh, the plan you approved for the use of the, uh, American Rescue Plan dollars, so we do have those funds available for investments like this.
Perfect. Good, good place for them, am I right? Uh, here we know for the discussion, um, uh, are booked?
Yeah, we got an option, a second.
Yeah, yeah. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, carries. All right. Um, anything else? Good for the order? Thank you very much. Good luck.
Thank you for coming down and, um, appreciate that.
Yeah, let us know how it's coming along, because that's, to me, that's just super interesting, and I, I appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you very much. We will be in touch.
Thank you. Thanks, Nancy.
Move adjourned.
Second.
Kevin moves adjourned, second by Kip. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. All right. Um, take a break? Take a break? All right.
Chair, ten minutes?
Ten minutes.
Ten minutes?
Ten minutes. Okay. We'll continue with our board here meeting with Ryan Childress. You want to come up and give us...
Good morning, commissioners.
Morning.
Morning, Ryan.
Ready for your good report?
Yes, got a few report components in my business for today, so I'll try to kind of get through those and offer time for questions and discussion as well. The first action item is consideration of final payment for the 2021 Lake Crystal Shop replacement project. The final contract amount, payment amount is one thousand dollars, effectively clearing out retainage. The final contract total payment amount is nine hundred and sixty-two thousand, nine hundred and fifty-seven dollars and eighty-five cents, as noted on the contract document. Contract changes included a little under nineteen thousand dollars for water main wet tap, uh, water shut-off, and then valving, bollards on the building, and then, uh, clear, clearing up some fuel island issues that we ran into in the middle of the project. So with that, I would recommend approval of the final contract payment for the Lake Crystal Shop project.
So moved. It's been moved, Kevin. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vance. And discussion? Uh, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries.
Okay. Second action item number three is cons, well, maybe I should step back. Good news is, uh, county staff, myself and Josh Downey worked on a Minnesota Department of Natural Resources, uh, outdoor recreation grant application for replacement of the Bray Park Beach Playground Equipment for calendar year 2023. Uh, our application was successful, so we're going to be receiving, uh, fifty percent obligation, so it's fifty percent towards total project cost, which equates to, based on our estimates, sixty-nine thousand, six hundred and ninety-eight dollars, so just shy of seventy thousand dollars from the DNR to help, uh, split the cost for the playground equipment replacement.
For half of it.
For half of it, yep.
So it's a hundred and forty thousand dollar project.
Correct. Uh, it's not all the equipment.
Right, I understand.
You have to make the site ADA and, and make it safer, so... But yeah, it's expensive project. The playground equipment is not cheap.
No. It never has been.
Never has been.
Dating myself, but when we put the playground equipment in Eagle Lake, I was a big part of trying to get that done and donated a bunch of time to it, but I think it was eight thousand dollars.
Wow. That's a steal.
But that was twenty-eight years ago, too, so...
Well, and there's a lot of volunteer work, too.
Back then there was, yeah. But still, the equipment wasn't nearly, and a lot of it's liability.
Yep. Additionally, you know, it's great to have a, kind of a winning application. We've already had another county contact us and ask for a copy of our application because it was successful, and knowing that we want to replace other playground equipment, that gives us a good, you know, a good template to use in the future, so we kind of know...
Those are things you don't like to share as much. We always want to share our stuff, but those are a little harder to share, because now you're competition with them next year.
Correct.
But we will still share.
So with that being said, included in the board packet is the grant contract agreement with the state of Minnesota for replacement of playground equipment. Again, the fifty percent obligation requires approval of the county board and execution by the county board chair and the county administrator, so with that, I would recommend approval of the agreement.
Okay. So most...
Move to approve.
And move, and advance.
Second.
Second by Kip. Okay. It looks like a good, yep, good thing to do here.
All right.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. All right.
All right, now to what I know is your most favorite time of the year, the annual reports.
Yes.
So we have included those in the board packet, and I'll go through those relatively quickly, and if you want me to slow down, please let me know. I'm more than happy to explain, uh, to my abilities, anything that's in the document, but I'll point out maybe some of the more, uh, important pages, so, and this is going to be probably the third or fourth page in. Uh, its title is Page One. It's a summary of the county highway department, and it includes a total of one more page down, please. One more down.
All right. You'll have to help me here a little bit.
Yep, yep. The first is a tabulation of our total mileage, so our county-stated highway regular roads, we have four hundred and twenty miles. We expended three-point-eight million dollars on maintenance of those roads. Of our county-stated highway municipal roads, which are again within city limits.
Jaylen, second. Okay.
And I just, I just want to make a comment, Mr. Chair, as Nancy came and talked about this at the work session. We had a great discussion. You did a great job there. Appreciate that. So we're familiar with the program and good, good job.
Nice write-up in the Free Press, too.
Yeah.
That was nice.
That was quite thorough.
And it looked, and it looked really positive. I think it's a, it's really a positive thing to, and to keep it down so, so folks can, can really afford their, you know, where they're living. And plus having upgraded, you know, because no matter how good the building is, after a certain amount of time, it's going to need to be upgraded. So this is positive. And like it's stated in the Free Press, you know, that area would be primed to have high-end apartments put up there. And I really appreciate you working on keeping it where it's at. So thank you.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I might just add that this is a part of the plan you approved for the use of the American Rescue Plan dollars. So we do have those funds available for investments like this.
Perfect. Good place for him. All right. Here we go. For the discussion. Our vote.
Yeah, we got an option, second.
Yeah. Yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed. All right. Anything else? Good for the order?
Thank you very much. Good luck.
Thank you for coming down and.
Yeah, let us know how it's coming along because that's, to me, that's just super interesting. And I appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you very much. We will be in touch. Thank you. Thanks, Nancy.
Moved to adjourn.
Second.
Kevin moves to adjourn second by Kip. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, carries. All right.
Take a break?
Take a break. All right.
Chair, 10 minutes?
10 minutes.
10 minutes?
10 minutes. Okay, we'll continue with our board here meeting with Ryan Childers. You want to come up and give us.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Morning, Ryan.
Ready for your good report?
Yes, got a few report components in my business for today, so I'll try to kind of get through those and offer time for questions and discussion as well. The first action item is consideration of final payment for the 2021 Lake Crystal Shop replacement project. The final contract amount, payment amount is $1,000, effectively clearing out retainage. The final contract total payment amount is $962,000, $957.85, as noted on the contract document. Contract changes included a little under $19,000 for water main wet tap, water shut off, then valving, bollards on the building, and then clearing up some fuel island issues that we ran into in the middle of the project. So with that, I would recommend approval of the final contract payment for the Lake Crystal Shop project.
So moved.
It's been moved, Kevin. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vance. And discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed, carries.
Okay. Second action item is consideration of final payment for state aid project 007, 607, 010. This is from the county stated Highway 7, new bridge number 07596. This is over the Maple River, just south of the city of Mapleton. This is the project that was wrapped up last fall. The final contract payment amount is $4,937.10. And then the total contract amount after this payment is issued, paid to date, would be $746,159.60, paid to Minowa Construction. So I'd recommend approval of the final contract payment to Minowa.
Moved to approve. Moved by Vance. And second?
Second.
Second by Kip. And then 7, Cassaw 7. Any questions? If all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, carries.
All right. Action item number three is, well, maybe I should step back. Good news is county staff, myself and Josh Downey worked on a Minnesota Department of Natural Resources outdoor recreation grant application for replacement of the Bray Park Beach Playground Equipment for calendar year 2023. Our application was successful. So we're going to be receiving 50% obligation. So it's 50% towards total project cost, which equates to, based on our estimates, $69,698. So just shy of $70,000 from the DNR to help split the cost for the playground equipment replacement.
For half of it.
For half of it, yep.
So it's a $140,000 project.
Correct. It's not all the equipment.
Right, I understand.
You have to make the site ADA and make it safer. So, but yeah, it's expensive project. Playground equipment is not cheap.
No. It never has been.
Never has been.
Dating myself, but when we put the playground equipment in Eagle Lake, I was a big part of trying to get that done and donated a bunch of time to it. But I think it was $8,000.
Wow. That's a steal.
But that was 28 years ago, too.
Well, there's a lot of volunteer work, too.
Back then there was, yeah. But still, the equipment wasn't nearly, and a lot of its liability.
Um, additionally, you know, it's great to have a kind of a winning application. We've already had another county contact us and ask for a copy of our application because it was successful. And knowing that we want to replace other playground equipment, that gives us a good, you know, a good template to use in the future. So we kind of know.
Those are things you don't like to share as much. We always want to share our stuff, but those are a little harder to share because now you're competition with them next year.
Correct.
But we will still share.
So with that being said, included in the board packet is the grant contract agreement with the state of Minnesota for replacement of playground equipment. Again, the 50% obligation requires approval of the county board and execution by the county board chair and the county administrator. So with that, I would recommend approval of the agreement.
Okay. Is there most?
Moved to approve.
And moved. And Vance?
Second.
Second by Kip. Okay. It looks like a good, yep, good thing to do here. All those in favor signify or say aye.
Aye.
Posed, carries. All right.
All right. Now to what I know is your most favorite time of the year, the annual reports.
Yes.
So we have included those in the board packet. And I'll go through those relatively quickly. And if you want me to slow down, please let me know. I'm more than happy to explain to my abilities anything that's in the document. But I'll point out maybe some of the more important pages. So this is going to be probably the third or fourth page in. Its title is Page 1. It's a summary of the county highway department. And it includes a total of one more page down, please. One more down.
All right. You'll have to help me here a little bit.
Yep, yep. The first is a tabulation of our total mileage. So our county stated highway regular roads, we have 420 miles. We expended $3.8 million on maintenance of those roads. Of our county stated highway municipal roads, which are again within city limits. We have 20.64 center lane miles, expended 200 and about $213,000. We have 302 miles of county roads, of which we spent $2.4 million maintaining. We spent $25,807,000 in 6, 807, 619 on Cassaw regular. We also spent another 2.725, 2.726 million on Cassaw municipals. So I won't read this in depth, but I wanted to point out that's a fairly important page. And then we'll go two pages, three pages. Couple more, please, to the summary. There we go. This is a narrative of the road construction projects. Hits on all the projects that were completed. So just very briefly, Cassaw 1 from 9 to 90 is still underway. That'll be wrapping up this year, but that was begun last year. 27 from US Highway 14 to Cassaw 2, project was open late last fall. Also, Cassaw 27 in Eagle Lake, that was open last fall as well. Did receive the final wearing course this year. Cassaw 44, which is Park Road, the realignment of the southern intersection at Highway 60, Minnesota State Highway 60. And then the roundabout interchange at County State Highway 57 or North Riverfront Drive and US Highway 14. The reconstruction of Cassaw 82, Victory Drive in Mankato. Replacement of the Cassaw 7, which we just approved the final contract payment on. But two municipal overlays on Cassaw is 10, 13, 40, 63, as well as County Road 125 and 129. Planning projects and maintenance operations are also included in the narrative discussion. The next page, the next, next page, there we go, includes a map of the projects and their locations within the county for your reference. And about four or five pages later, labeled page number five is a distribution to the townships. There we go. Showing what, how, how the total of $394,000 that we received from state is distributed to different townships throughout the county. With that on the skip, almost all the way to the back of the document, there's, there's just a lot of detailed ledgers with respect to inventory depreciation tables of equipment, as well as road costs. So if you have a question, how much money do we spend on Cassaw 10? It's, it's in here in the ledger. It's tabulated and accounted for. There's also accounting for each individual project that was completed or funds were expended on. And as you know, this report is mandatory for submittal to the Minnesota Department of Transportation. And that's what helps us obtain our Cassaw funding. So I don't know the page in your packet, but it's labeled page 24 at the bottom of it. About seven or eight pages from the end of this document. Second catch-up is our charts and graphs. And I think those are probably the, perhaps the most helpful in this document. Maybe in the future I should add a list of pages for stuff. There we go. Which ones are, that I want to show, just so there's links to jump to them quick. On page 24, as it's labeled, is the 2021 source of funds. This shows just kind of how complicated and how many different fund sources we get between federal, state aid maintenance, regular municipal, state aid construction, regular municipal, township bridge bonds, turnback funds, LRI P money, local road and bridge coming from levy, local option sales taxes also included, I think, in that local funding, and then other fund sources through grants or construction reimbursement, contract agreements, things of that nature. All in total, this is inflated because of the turnback project and receiving 95% of that upfront of that nearly $15 million contract, $38,128,639. On the next page is a summary of our expense breakdown. And you can see we, as you know, we run very thin on administration. We spend nearly all or 77% of our money on road construction projects. The other 22% is maintenance and equipment, and 1% is for administration, which is effectively staff costs for total expense breakdown of, I'm sorry, that is mislabeled. I just noticed that now. That should be 2021 expense breakdown. $35,923. On the next page, we've got several different graphs showing funding trends. You can obviously see the dramatic impact. I'm sorry, I jumped two pages. Personnel services and other breakdowns. So our construction breakdown, personnel is a relatively low share, 5% the remaining. Maintenance is a little bit higher on personal services and contracts and supplies. And only 3% of our budget goes towards equipment. So a lot of it, again, that money that we have going through our budget is all going right back out into the infrastructure. On the next page is a summary of expenditures. And again, you can see the influence that that very large turnback project had on our overall. This was our biggest construction year ever. And I'm hoping I don't have to continue repeating saying that we've had our biggest construction year ever because it was a tough one for our staff. But we, they, they made it through and did a fantastic job. And again, that was inflated by that very large turnback project that we are seeing with the influx of revenues, as just shown on the subsequent page. You can certainly see the impacts of some of those agreements. And you can certainly see the impacts of the local option sales taxes. You look between 2015 and 2020. What a dramatic change that's made to our local fund sources and how that's impacted our overall ability to construct projects. And then the last chart is the constant 1970s funding. So this uses the Engineering News Record Construction Cost Indexes where it ties it back to 1970s, what's a dollar worth, and where, where it shows our funding in comparison to those $1970 so that it's not, it accounts for inflation in construction. So with that being said, I'd be happy to answer any questions. If there are none, I would recommend approval of that report.
Are there any questions there, Ryan?
I just have one question. The farmer in me has just got to ask, how many grease guns did we buy for $2,700?
How many grease guns? I can get that to you later.
Okay.
Any other important questions? The only comment that I have about it was the County Road 27 project, the north and south projects both turned out extremely well. And when we went into that last year, doing them both at the same time didn't seem like a good idea. But now, not knowing that I have to deal with either one of them this year, it seemed like a really good idea. So just when you, when you cut off that many north-south routes, it was problematic. But they both, both those roads are very nice roads.
Yep, thank you.
Help me remember, do we put these annual, once approved, do we put these annual reports? Are they on the website?
Well, it's in the board packet, so it's on the website now.
Okay. But it's, but it's not, the parks annual report or anything isn't on a, on the website?
On its own spot.
Not that I'm aware of. That'd be a better question perhaps for Jesse or Scott.
We certainly could.
We can add it.
Thank you.
Anything else for Brian?
I'll move to approve the report.
It's been moved by Kevin, the report, Public Works, and a second?
Second.
Second by Kip, I think first. All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, carries.
All right.
Thank you. That's a good report.
Thank you. The next annual report is the report of the Parks Department. And this is something that we pared down considerably from previous iterations. There's quite a bit of repeated budget information that was in this report. And as we looked at it, because of transitions with staff and just trying to gain internal efficiencies, we did pare this down quite a bit. So if there's additional information you'd like to see in here, I'm more than happy to bring it back into it. But I just tried to not have redundant information in these reports compared to budget, et cetera. So the third page of the report is, again, a verbal summary of the park system and totals. I won't read through that. And then, yeah, let's jump to that page, the park statistics. So this, I think, is just really great. We really just tried to condense down the statistics that I know the board usually likes to see. So total revenue collected in 2021 was $220,272.36, including 8,930 total camping nights, 6,697 online reservations were made. 80% of the campers came from outside of Blue Earth County. We did not offer boat rentals in 2021. Again, kind of a reciprocal effect of COVID. Total of 1,754 bundles of firewood and 136 shelter reservations were made. And then you can see how that data compares to 2020. Obviously, our camping nights were up dramatically because we did not have to reduce the number of campsites for spacing because of what we had to do in 2020 due to imposed COVID restrictions. So again, we go through, there's considerable financial information reporting on the Parks Department. And I'd like to go again closer to the back of the document that shows kind of those breakdown tables.
Too far.
All right. One more. One more, one more. There we go.
Sorry.
So, no, you're good. This is a summary of our cash revenues and the sources that they come from. So primarily, a lot of the revenue, again, parks are being funded through local levy, county property tax funds, local fund sources. And then as we look at our expenditures, primarily half of it is going into operations, 3% to equipment, 35% into maintenance of our infrastructure, and 12% into construction projects within the park system. And then jump two pages down. And you can see those bar charts of our camping and reservation numbers. You can see the boat rental revenue comparison, which obviously we have nothing in 20 and 21. And wood sales was up dramatically. I'll go another two pages to a summary that includes the caretakers' income and how those are broken down, if you're interested in that. There's tabulations of the camping participation by week, as well as a tracking of living tree memorials, as well as red jacket prints. We've stopped selling those for the most part. Nobody's, I don't think we sold one in years and years, but we still count for it. And the last page is a summary of the capital and outlay construction projects completed, equipment purchased. So as you know, you know, a few pieces of equipment, a tilt bed trailer, mower cart and lift, a new zero-turn mower. And then the big project was the red jacket trails stairs replacement, which is a great project, much safer than the previous set of wooden slippery slimy stairs. So with that being said, I would recommend approval of this report if there aren't any questions.
Okay. Thanks, Ryan. Is there any record, further questions?
I was moved to approve.
Nancy moves to approve. Is there a second? Jaylen, a second. All right.
Do we, do we expect any boat rentals this year?
There will be a little bit. Duck Lake, they have a lot of problems with boat rentals. Bray Park is renting them out.
Okay.
So we've kind of left it to the caretakers because it's, it's not something we're necessarily making any significant level of money on. And it's more headache for the boat caretakers at times. They've got to chase down the boats to get left out and get washed away and wind up halfway across the lake and things of that nature. So it's kind of one of those things we throttle back.
Especially if there's only one or two people in Bray Park.
That's the struggle, too, is staffing for the caretakers.
All right. Here we go. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, carries.
All right. We'll move into our informational updates for construction projects. The Cassaw 40 Bridge Replacement Project, all of the road and bridge, all the bridge and road approach work is completed except for the striping. Project is planned to be opened by this Friday once the final traffic striping is placed. The County Road 116, and that was done by M&amp;K Construction out of Walnut Grove. County Road 169 Bridge Replacement Project by Minowa Construction, the bridges, work is complete. The approach grading is generally completed. The paving is scheduled for this week, and the road should be open within one to two weeks. So it's nice to have a couple of those bridge projects opening up well before harvest season. The County Road 151 Bridge Replacement is going to be closed this upcoming Monday to begin reconstruction. The contractor is going to use the existing bridge because a lot of the, the fill material has come from one side of the bridge, be hauled across. So they're going to leave the bridge in place, haul the dirt that they need, then demo the bridge and begin replacement of the bridge. So that's a fairly low volume road, so we don't anticipate a lot of traffic impacts for that one. So we'll be opening two and closing one. The 2022, the two municipal overlay work, all the paving has been completed. There's some shouldering remaining on Cassaw 34 and 47. And then they'll install final striping and rumble strips. We're hopeful that that'll all be completed by the end of this week. Things are moving along in kind of our first phase of construction projects. Then we've got the turnback of Old Highway 66, which is now our county stated Highway 1 from 9 to 90. The segment from the trestle north to Cassaw 90 has two of its three pavement lists completed. So that's providing, there's still road closure signage, but it's providing access to Red Jacket Valley Park and Red Jacket Park. So that's, that was great that we were able to get that opened up. The structural soil nail component of the remaining retaining wall should be done by the end of this week. That's being done by GSI out of Colorado. So they're a specialty contractor. The architectural finished work of the soil nail walls, so putting on kind of the aesthetic face that'll look like the quarried limestone block, is actually, that began yesterday, Monday, July 11. That's Boulderscape. They're also a specialty contractor from out west. The, most of the curb and gutter and the base layer of the pavement through the chute should be done this week. So at least the pavement layers will be down. They're leaving out maybe pieces here and there as they need to cross on and off of the pavement to not wreck the curb. Mathiowetz is shaping and final grading the ditches and boulevards, preparing for turf establishment, riprap, kind of putting the project back together. So it's really starting to shape up and looks like it's going to be a really nice road, similar to the northern segment that we completed a couple of years ago. Cassaw 7 in Mapleton is being worked on by WW Blacktop. They're doing well. They're ahead of schedule. They should have the pavement completed on the entire project by the end of this week. So that's good news. And the remaining work includes paving the trail, final shaping and turf establishment. And they're moving right along. I think we're anticipating, you know, that project could be completed by mid, mid-August and unless something would happen in late August by their contract deadline. County State Highway 10 and 72 in Vernon Center, the city's run into just numerous issues with that. As you may recall, the bids came in considerably higher than their engineer's estimate. The, they've written two legislative bills to either provide additional funding or allow the previous project to proceed forward with a reduction to just include some of the street work. But as you know, that requires legislative approval without a special session. They have to wait until 2023 to get that work through. So right now, they're going to have a very small contract go through to utilize a $580,000 deed grant to do some of the sewer work on the gravel city streets because that's all they can afford. And they want to utilize that grant before it expires. They have to have the work authorized and approved by September 30th, 2022. Without a special session, everything else is going to have to wait until 2023. So we're remaining a project partner with them. We're just kind of sitting idly by, providing support. And we'll have to continue to monitor our ability to financially meet our obligation, 90% of the Cassaw eligible item for 10 and 72. So unfortunate for the city of Vernon Center, the bidding environment and the timing of how this all played out. Cassaw 11 from 20 to Minnesota Highway 68, R&amp;E Enterprise out of Mankato, they're working on drainage crossings and ditch grading from Cassaw 50 to the west. So they're, they're out there beginning work on the project. Cassaw 12 from 26 east to Cassaw 2, up by the Mankato Airport, Minnesota paving materials, working on the northern portion, again, similar to R&amp;E, the drainage crossings and grading. They're working from the airport driveway to the north. That's technically was the second phase, but we allow them flexibility to do whichever one was more convenient. Cassaw 27 to the east is providing the detour route. And airport access is coming in via the south. Once they get that paved, they'll actually flip that, and then airport access will be provided via the north. Cassaw 16 from the La Sura River to Cassaw 90. I know we've, we've delayed this project several times just due to staffing workload, et cetera. We are actually moving forward, and we'll have a public open house meeting scheduled July 26 from 4:00 to 6:00 PM at the Public Works Building. So I would welcome the Commissioners to join us if they're available. Cassaw 13 from 169 to 1, we've provided 60% comments to SRF, and design is progressing well. There is a, probably a pretty high possibility that we will not be able to get state bridge bonds to assist with the bridge replacement costs. We did design the bridge in parallel with the road so that it was one large, kind of tear the Band-Aid off approach project. I, in this circumstance, I would really not recommend waiting to replace the bridge because then you'd have two separate projects. So with that being said, we may have to utilize some more of our county stated highway or local option sales tax dollars to help with that project and with that significant bridge replacement. And again, much of that comes from the inaction of legislature authorizing bonding dollars to, to help us with the local stated bridge fund. 26 from 57 to 22, we're anticipated receiving the 60% plans in the next few weeks. It's moving along well. We're going to do some additional coordination with landlords on that segment from North Riverfront Drive to Highway 22. Our maintenance crews are busy shouldering rural roads over the next couple of weeks. So you will see them out in the rural parts, working. Then they're going to begin seal coating. They've got approximately 45 miles of rural roads to do following the, wrapping up the shouldering work. That does also include the last segment of Cassaw 12, which was from Minnesota Highway 83 to Cassaw 17. You'll also see them out mowing shoulders on rural roads, spraying and spot mowing noxious weeds. And also, we've got two crews working with the excavator in the back on tile and culvert replacement projects. Work on the St. Clair Salt Shed is underway, including the port piers and the bunker panels. The one thing I did want to bring the county board up to speed on is a traffic paint shortage issue. So on July 16, Sir Lines Lot, who is our prime contractor for our countywide maintenance striping contract, did send us a force majeure notice of an industry-wide latex paint shortage, meaning they, they can't get paint, they can't do their work. Since we received that letter, and it wasn't just us that received that letter, I should back up, it was every county I talked to received that letter from them, from AAA, from any striping contractor out there. There's a significant supply chain issue as we see in so many different facets of what we do over the last few years. Currently, they have enough paint on hand to complete all of the county maintenance overlays. So those roads that have already been paved, they've also got enough to cover the seal coat roads and some of our restriping roads. The remainder of the restriping contract The remainder of the restriping contract will be dependent on receiving additional traffic paint, but we were going to not seal coat if they weren't going to be able to put the stripes back out there. We actually have had a shipment of paint show up at our shop, so it's, it's in our building.
It's in your possession.
Yes.
Yeah.
I was, I was going to mention the intersection of Victory and Madison, the curve, you know, where you, the turning lanes.
Yep. I think that those are under the city of Mankato's.
Are they?
Municipal maintenance.
That was one of the things we, we may have mentioned years ago. I remember when we talked to Al about it and stuff.
You get credit for that one Vance. Because Al wasn't all that, Al wasn't all excited about that at all, but I think they actually worked out pretty well. Yeah, he didn't care for that idea.
So you're talking the center.
The, you know, the turning lanes, you know, like turning from Madison.
Onto Victory.
Onto Victory.
Yep.
In fact, that's what it, that's, that's where they were is the Madison onto Victory. That's where they were on both, both sides. So I don't, I don't know if the city is doing that or.
I'll double check, look into that.
If you could check that, that'd be great.
It was our last big road before the roundabouts came.
That was, yeah, if the roundabouts would have came earlier, we might've had a roundabout there.
That's right. It was the last one before that.
That would've been, that would've been a big roundabout to start the community off with.
We got enough, we got enough with those other intersections there after that.
22 in Madison was the same thing. So it just would've been four or five years earlier.
Yep.
And same with the intersection at 12 and 3 by Walmart Distribution Center, that should've been a roundabout.
Yeah, that certainly could've been.
You know, that was just before that technology. That would've been a perfect one to start with.
Yep. Yeah. It would have had a lot of traffic on it right away.
Yeah, and they're still getting a lot of traffic on it.
Right. So with that being said, the last item that I have is discussion, and I included a memorandum to the county board, especially when we have significant amount of things happening with Rapidan Dam. The memorandum is included in the board packet and I thought is I'm assuming you'd like me to kind of walk through that and talk our way through it if there's adequate time to do that.
Yeah.
So I'll kind of just jump into that. On June 8th, we approved an agreement with BAR Engineering to update the Rapidan Dam Emergency Action Plan. That's a mandatory document that needs, requires updating and actually they just got me drafted that to look at. During the previous county board work session in June, on the 14th of June, the commissioners did request a summary of alternative courses of action for the dam for contrast and comparison purposes in addition to the removal and repair reports that were developed by BAR Engineering. So I did have an opportunity to go through several past documents as well, speak with BAR and others, and put together a relatively brief narrative on that. So the first that I think the board requested was, what if we just do nothing? As we previously discussed, that's an okay thing to do for now, but it's not a viable long-term solution. You know, it's, it's okay until we figure out what we want to do and figure out how we're going to get money to pay for it. However, as you know, the integrity of the downstream apron is a critical component to preserving the safety of the dam. And left unchecked, that downstream apron and the underlying sandstone bedrock is going to continue to scour and wash out, erode. And if left unchecked, that's going to create a pretty significant issue. And it doesn't, we don't have to look too far back to think about what doing nothing led to a point where you have hypothetical dam failure and it was highly probable. And that was the case in 2002 when that was encountered and we had to do an emergency contract. Effectively, the, the front downstream third of the dam was scoured out to a depth of about 20 feet deep. And there was only about the back, two thirds of the dam actually had any, anything left underneath them. The dam was somewhat hanging over a cliff. So we certainly don't want to recreate that, that, that condition where there's potential for catastrophic failure, there's significant liability to the county associated with that potential failure due to environmental impacts, due to safety concerns of public safety, the increased costs associated with an emergency type of contract, and the high probability that if something like that in the dam were to fail, we would also lose or have to close the Kasaw nine bridge. This is directly upstream of the dam. And when you don't have a bridge replacement project planned for, you know, even to try to fast track something like that is maybe two years to replacement. Whereas if we had it planned out, we can replace that bridge in four months once we have the design and the permitting and all of those steps done. But if we have to do that on an emergency basis, it could be out for three years. It's a pretty dramatic impact difference. Regulatory agencies, including the FERC and the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources, do require that the dam owners keep it in a state of good repair for it to be left on the river. That is include performing routine safety inspection monitoring to varying degrees, whether weekly, annual, and comprehensive five-year inspections that would be required. If the DNR were to determine that the dam is unsafe or needs repair, Minnesota statute 103G, point 515 subdivision three allows the DNR to order repair, alteration, or removal of the dam. So that's probably an important one to remember. If we were to move on, maybe I'll stop and see if there's any questions on the do nothing before I move on.
What was the cost of the weekly, annual, and comprehensive five-year inspections?
So I don't have, I think they were detailed in the, well, the repair report. I can tell you the weekly cost that we're encountering just by having the temporary employee out there is about $250 a week.
Okay.
So about $12,000 a year, but there'll be times where if we haven't flooded it, his time is going to be dramatically more. So I think we budgeted for about $15,000 next year for that.
Okay.
If we're to move on to the repair with no hydropower alternative, again, this may be an appropriate course of action with, without the expense of reestablishing hydropower. It saves considerable amount of money. We could withdraw our FERC hydropower license exemption. Then dam safety would be managed by the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources. There could be a marginal cost savings in that monitoring and reporting. There would still be responsibilities for that. It would not be completely absolved. Regulatory agencies require again that we keep it in safe, so that's, that's not going to go away, that we have to keep it in safe condition and do monitoring and reporting. The dam is 110 years old. Ultimately, it's going to need to be removed or replaced. The concrete structural components are continuing to deteriorate out there. Depending on how long the county wishes to preserve the dam, additional repairs are going to be necessary, especially to the decaying concrete spillway, piers, and other structural components that are starting to significantly deteriorate. We would anticipate that those types of repairs would have to happen in the next 10 to 20 years. Repurposing of the powerhouse or its components could be considered, perhaps an interpretive center. However, there's likely significant liability concerns with bringing members of the public in and out of the dam, or whether you'd want to salvage those components and do something different adjacent to it.
On that, are there outfits, companies, whatever, that work on, or there's sites, I think there's like one in New York that they, that was a dam that they did something like this.
Right.
Could find out, but.
Yeah, you know, as far as like an interpretive center where you could bring people in and teach them about hydroelectric generation. The issue we have with Rapidan is that the stairs are very steep and don't meet ADA code. And then as, as you know, when you go down there, you have to duck through several areas or you're going to crack your head. We actually took the DNR through there Friday last week.
And hear them hit their heads? Okay.
No, but they had to, we actually stood and kind of just pointed out, you got to duck here, you got to duck here. So Mike and I.
There'd be, there'd be no way we could put an interpretive center in that place and cover ADA.
It wouldn't be allowed.
I mean, it'd be impossible.
Right.
To redo the whole thing.
Permits would be required from the DNR and other state and local agencies for any repairs that you would propose. The BAR Engineering 2021 Repair Option feasibility report states that at a minimum, the downstream apron, stilling basin requires repair to ensure dam stability. That scope of repair, including the, the stilling basin where they were installing the, the blocks that would help dissipate the energy, was estimated $6.3 million. The level of repair could potentially be scaled back a little bit. You know, as in the BAR report, we wanted to, what's a really a robust repair that's going to give us long-term viability? If the board wanted to further discuss it, we could dial that level of repair back. Something more consistent with the county's FEMA repair application for what would be a shorter term repair with less, less reliability. So meaning it could be a repair that could last three years, it could last five years, it could last 10 years. We just don't know to, with as high of a level of confidence as the other level of repair that we had proposed in the BAR report. Additionally, the dam safety and operation of the five steel tainer gates would still require repair, which was estimated $450,000. You would also want to include contingencies for consideration. The other thing I would recommend is an ice boom to stabilize or retain an ice cover as it comes over the top of the dam so that we can keep the temperature of the water even just ever so slightly warmer as we discussed in that report. That, that super cold water going over the spillway created frazzle ice that created the downstream ice jam dam that actually inundated the powerhouse. So that was one of the recommendations from the BAR report was an ice, ice dam, or an ice, sorry, an ice boom that should be considered upstream. There may be some slight salvage value to the generators and turbines. However, I think the assumption is that the cost of getting them out of there, retrofitting the dam to be without them would probably just be a wash with the cost of, of the revenue that you may generate by getting them sold or recycled. Any questions on a repair with no hydropower option?
Any questions?
Dam replacement. Blue Earth County would have to determine whether or not the dam replacement would include hydropower. To me would only probably make sense to replace with hydropower, especially at that height and cost to have some potential revenue. We'd have to decide whether or not we want to have somebody come in and operate it or operated ourselves. I think in past discussions, the board has preferred that we have an external partner operating the dam on, on behalf of the county and we just obtain a share of the revenues. The location would be a key component of replacing the dam. It would likely have to be constructed immediately downstream of the existing dam, which would allow us to leave the sediment in place and perhaps even a portion of the old dam in place. There's significant geotechnical investigation that would be necessary due to, again, that sandstone bedrock that's there and determining how suitable it is to build on top of. It's assumed again, most of the sediment can remain in place. The state historic preservation office would need to make a determination about the historical significance of the dam. We talked about that last month and at some point in time, we need to begin that process with SHIBO because that'll be time consuming so that they can make a determination of whether or not the dam is eligible for the National Register of Historic Places and then what mitigation steps may be necessary depending on the direction the county wants to take. We would need to get new permits from the MPCA, the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources, and perhaps other state and local agencies. Permit and operating license would be required from the FERC. So that would require going through a new process with the FERC and a complete new application. That'd be fairly time and resource consuming. There's likely that there'd be many more studies necessary on the dam if it includes hydropower, and they may require those as a condition of a permit approval or step to permit approval. And as we know, some divisions of the DNR may not support construction of a new dam, especially as we continue to kind of look at the impacts of upstream passage for fish, which is one of the big reasons why they brought us the presentation that they made a few years ago. So looking at the total cost of a project like that, we, we went back to the 1997 BAR Engineering Evaluation of the Rapidan Dam Report that did very briefly review replacement of the dam as an alternative before it went further into detail and further studied in the 2000 and 2002 reports that were the springboard that we updated for the 2021 reports that were recently completed. So this study proposed salvaging the existing generation equipment, leaving most of the sediment in place pending permit requirements, and constructing a new dam directly downstream of the existing dam before fully demolishing the old dam or partially demolishing the old dam. The 1997 study cost was anticipating using a roller compacted concrete, which at the time was a much more affordable construction method. Talking with BAR, I don't know that they would maybe recommend that again now. It'd probably go back to more conventional type of construction. So the, the cost was pretty low estimate in 1997 of $6.14 million for replacement of the dam. In comparison, the 1997 study estimated that the repair and maintenance of the dam would only be a little bit under $2 million. And then estimated the full removal cost at a little bit under $25 million. So the repair and removal costs were studied in further detail again in the 2000 and 2002 feasibility reports. Without an updated detailed estimate for replacement and for just general cost estimating, we went to the Engineering News Record Construction Cost Index, as we discussed earlier today, and equated those $1997 to $2022. And when we do that, we included some contingencies upwards of 50% because I think that cost estimate was very low. So that brings us to a cost range of about $21 to $25 million for a dam replacement with hydropower. That doesn't address any kind of dredging of any significant volume of sediment, so it's still just only going to be run of river type of dam where you won't have a large reservoir to draw for hydroelectric production. So again, limits your peak capacity and your.
It doesn't count, it doesn't count the removal of the old dam either, does it?
It did, just partial, I think, just kind of knocking down the top of it and letting the sediment fill it in, building the new dam just downstream of the old one. So if we want to further consider this option, I would strongly recommend another feasibility report similar to what was done by BAR for the removal or repair options. There's a high level of uncertainty if replacement of the dam would even be permitted by the necessary regulatory agencies. I think that'd be quite a battle in all honesty. And.
Oh, they, they wouldn't, they would not.
I don't think.
I, I wouldn't put, I wouldn't put a lot on it, I, confidence.
That's good to know.
Any questions on those three options that were presented? If I answered questions that you may have had or provided some additional background is.
Yeah, this is very helpful.
Yep. Okay. Be happy to provide other information as requested. So just a few other items, I'll try to get through these. I know this is taking quite a while. On June 20th, the HSEM Homeland Security and Emergency Management Quarterly Report for the FEMA 4442 Disaster Declaration was submitted. As the county board is aware, in March 2021, we received or we were awarded 1.637 million for repair of the downstream apron and 1.038 million for mitigation, which included grounded anchors into the underlying bedrock to try to eliminate this continual issue that we're seeing of the, the concrete being peeled up, trying to kind of nail it down to the ground. So a total of $2,675,500 was awarded to Blue Earth County. The funding deadline has already been extended once. The new deadline is June 12th, 2023. And as we talked about previously, another time extension request is going to be necessary. That has to go higher up the ladder within HSEM and within FEMA for us to get that extension. So we do have that deadline looming and that's to expend the funds in June of 2023. They, let's see what else we have in there. We could hypothetically, we'd have to get approval, but we could potentially use the repair dollars towards a removal contract if that's what the county chose to do. However, they indicated that the mitigation dollars would not be available to be used towards mitigation contracts. About $1.6 million could be available towards the removal contract. On June 21st, we conducted a Microsoft Teams meeting with Jason Boyle from the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources. I included a response from Jason. I had sent him an email asking for clarification on a handful of items that we discussed during the meeting. I'll get to that. Actually, we just jumped to that. That's a couple of pages behind. A lot of it, the, the underlying tone was included in some of my other speaking points. We do not need to transfer the DNR permit to the county because of the FERC licensure currently. If we terminate or surrender the FERC license, then we would be under the DNR dam safety obligations. They don't have a, a fully clear picture of what that would be because most of the dams in the state, if, are not of this magnitude, and if they are, they're being used for hydropower and being regulated by the FERC. I touched on the scenario where they could mandate removal or repair of the dam, and that was under the state statute. And then talked about different funding opportunities that may be available and dam safety project funds for repairs or removal of. And dam safety project funds for repairs or removal of government-owned dams is available through the state, as you know, that's what will be used for the 2016 repairs that were completed. So I'll jump back up to my report, if there's no questions on the DNR, and whether I did provide the information. We continue the maintenance and operation and monitoring that average weekly costs, we discussed $150 a week. Additional agency coordination is still needed with the Fish and Wildlife Service. I don't see that as a pressing need right now until we determine what direction we care to move forward with. The county will need to follow up with the MPCA as well to discuss the project. Again, not an urgent task, those two are kind of on my back-burner to-do list when the timing were, and we maybe have more direction. And then we talked about last month, and I provided the summary of all of the outstanding tasks that were still necessary for the dam and the timing that was associated with those. There's really no deadline changes since the last report on those items, so those still remain present and necessary in the foreseeable future. I've provided the different information for you, the Engineering News Record Cost Indexing and things of that nature. So there's a lot there, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I don't have any questions, just, you know, this is the information we were kind of looking for, so I appreciate you getting it together. I can't, I don't, I don't think you missed anything, I think that's pretty much all of the scopes we wanted looked at, so.
It's a little bit to digest, so.
It's a lot.
Anybody else have any questions? All right?
Well, that concludes my report for the day.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you.
Report?
Thanks for the report, and it seems like we spent a lot of money on, or a lot of time on the dam.
Yeah.
And we'll have a lot more time on the dam before we make our decision. But thanks for all the work you've done on that.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thanks, Ryan. All right, and we... County Attorney, Pat. Looking forward to your report.
Morning, Pat.
Morning, Pat.
Morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. If you have any questions regarding the information in the report, I'll be more than happy to answer those. Some information I did want to pass along, I think you've probably seen in the media that the Drug Task Force has been keeping us busy with some record drug busts for the year so far. But then, I was recently looking into some cases to determine a few things. We're still seeing, the national trend is that the more serious crimes have been on the rise. Every year, we have to file with the state a firearms report, any case involving a firearm. And we typically, on an average year, have 10 or less. Well, last year, we had 27. So we're seeing a major increase in that area as well. But if you have any specific questions, I'm more than happy to ask them or answer them, excuse me. But other than that, I will let you get on with your business.
Any questions, Pat?
I don't have any questions today.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
Thanks, Pat.
Okay. And we have Administration?
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, the first item is the county board minutes for June 21st.
I would move to approve.
Vance moves to approve. Board minutes, second by Kip. Discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries.
Next are the bills for the three weeks indicated.
So moved. Second by Kevin, the bills, and second by Vance. Any questions? Anybody wants to stump the Administrator there? No question? We haven't done that for a while, Vance. That's just a little plagiarism, yeah. We kind of, every once in a while, want to dig into the budget.
And a lot of times, is what we'll do, is we'll bring out some of the ones that are either odd or are high-end, just to let the public know what the county's spending the money on.
Okay. After hearing none, and all in favor of the payment of bills, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I have number 13 in your packet, is the Human Resources Department Agenda. Just have informational items for the board today. We filled a number of positions, starting with the on-call library clerk, a couple of those, actually. Then we have filled an appraiser position in our Property and Environmental Resources Department, along with a financial assistance case aide in our Human Services area, and then a part-time Property and Environmental Resources Specialist. We did receive a resignation of a Maintenance Technician 2 in our Public Works area, so we've initiated recruitment to refill that position. We also received a resignation of an on-call library clerk and have initiated recruitment to fill that position. We, again, a resignation of a probation officer in our Community Corrections area and have initiated recruitment to refill that. And there was a resignation of a Property and Environmental Resources Specialist, and we've initiated recruitment to fill that. And lastly, a resignation of a Children's Services Case Aid in Human Services, and we've initiated recruitment to refill that position. Be happy to answer any questions the board might have on any of that activity.
Anybody have questions about Human Resources? See any? All right.
All right. Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I have number 14 in your packet, is an addendum to the agreement with the University of Minnesota for Extension Services. As I understand it, the Extension Committee has discussed utilizing some resources as a part of this memorandum of understanding to employ a part-time intern over the summer to work with the Extension Agent. And so bringing it forward today for the board's consideration.
I'm with approval.
Second, on by Vance. Any questions? All right. Everybody understands, and all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. All right. Down to the resolution.
Yes, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, it's a resolution in your packet regarding potential financing through a $4 million capital improvement bond to assist with some capital improvement purchases. This is not a commitment by the board at this point, it just is a resolution kind of putting a stake in the ground that allows us to go back 60 days and pick up any purchases of capital equipment we might have done. As you know, interest rates are increasing, and so this might be an opportunity that the board would like to consider later this fall to issue some bonds to take advantage of what is still pretty good rates. But bringing that forward for your consideration today, staff are recommending that we do this resolution just to create some opportunity later on. We would need to issue these bonds probably late fall if we were to move ahead with that.
Okay.
I'm with approval.
Been moved by Kip. Resolution?
Second.
Second? All right. Any...
I got just a couple of questions, Bob. The interest rates are creeping up a little bit, which would make sense that we give you some authorization to move forward with something in case we need to. How much are we, how are we doing on our investments at this point?
Those rates are going up a little bit as well. I mean, there's a corresponding, as your cost to borrow goes up, your cost, or your revenue from savings goes up a little bit. I don't know the exact percentage, but, you know, they had been really minuscule previously.
And this was a shorter term, right?
Yes, this will be a four-year term on this.
Okay, yeah. That way, if we do get upside down in something, at least we only have four years.
Right.
Those 10, 12, 15-year ones, where you think it's a good deal, they can change pretty fast.
Right.
Those are the only questions I had, Mr. Chair.
And like my 401K, that's now a 301. You know, we had that problem. Didn't mean to say that, but it'll be a problem in that regard. All right. Any other questions, Bob, on that? All right. That's just a, yeah, that is a resolution, so.
Yes, we would need a vote on that.
Vote, so we got to get...
Got a motion in a second, yeah.
We did have a motion in a second. Okay. All those in favor, signify, saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I have number 16 in your packet, is an application for a one-to-four-day temporary on-sale liquor license permit. This is from the locale brewing company to provide some alcohol at the Mount Cato ski area. This is part of an event being held out there on July 24th, and so recommending approval here today.
So moved. And moved, or second?
Second.
Okay, second? Yeah, we haven't had too many of these lately.
Yeah, these temporary ones are a little bit uncommon. We typically have the full-year licenses, but these permits don't come up very often.
Okay. Well, here, no further. All those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. All right. I guess that concludes...
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you for all that. And committee reports. We'll start with Kevin, and go down, and you can figure out, you kind of know how it goes.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. A lot of ditch hearings and things like that, landowner meetings, been involved in that, was participated in the Blue Earth County Township Officers Meeting. We've also had our Soil and Water, our monthly meeting on the 7th. We have upcoming Goberba Policy and Technical Committee will be meeting together, and then the next week, the Lissour One Watershed, One Plan Policy Committee will continue our monthly meetings. Other than that, it's been a little quieter, so, thank you, Mr. Chair. That concludes my report.
That's true. Okay, Vance?
Well, we go all the way back to June 21st. I had a, after our board meeting, we had a NACO Central meeting, Central Region meeting. We had an open house for, can't remember, the county road.
It was 13.
13, and then we had another open house for the Public Works. The next day, the 22nd, I had a retirement get-together for Deputy Tony Adams from the Blue Earth County Sheriff's Department. And I had a meeting after that for the NACO Transportation Committee. On the 23rd, we had our budget hearings for both the Sheriff's Office and the County Attorney's Office, and then Township Officers Meeting, which was already reported. And on the 24th, I had a meeting for the NACO RAC Rural Action Caucus. On the 28th, I had a meeting for the Equity and Grant Making through NACO. That was a rather, rather quiet week that week, and actually, a week later, I've only had one meeting with the Department Head meeting on the 6th. And then yesterday, I had a Transportation Alliance meeting in the morning, a TDS meeting in the morning, and, let's see, we had our annual board meeting for detox yesterday afternoon at Carl's Corner in Essig, Minnesota. So that, and of course, this morning, we swore in Julianne, Ms. Worsma, as the County Commissioner, again, welcome. And we had our new employee group meeting this morning for all the new employees for Blue Earth County. And that would be the end of my...
Okay, thanks, Vance. Mr. Kip?
Mr. Chair, after our last meeting, the Public Works Open House was already mentioned. I thought we had a good turnout, got a lot of feedback, and I think the staff is working diligently on trying to deal with some of the issues that came up with that meeting, and we'll be moving forward with that. We had, Kevin mentioned, we had several Faribault County ditch meetings, three or four, to be exact. Got all of them wrapped up except one, which we'll be bringing back here and continuing it back here. Then I had my statewide emergency communication meeting, gave our update from the Legislative Committee at that meeting. Things are going well. We got the Deputy Commissioner that came on board just recently, so he is getting familiar with the group. And then I was over in Wasika County for JD 11. It's a very large watershed, about 45,000 acres, 45,000 to 48,000 acres, and has not been redetermined since the 70s, so they are working on getting that redetermined. And so they had two meetings, breaking up the group because of all the landowners, and had two presentations. Then we had planning and zoning, only had one item from the planning and zoning. Blue Earth County actually came in with something, was non-eventful, so we'll see that at our next meeting. And then I had my legislative SECB meeting, which we got several updates on the programs we got going on, and then swearing of the new commissioner this morning, congratulations, and the new employee orientation, which always is entertaining to meet our new employees. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thanks, Kip. I don't know if you have anything you want to say.
Nothing to report.
We've been here for three hours.
You can report on that quick, your early morning orientation. Okay. Yeah, it was kind of slow. We did have, like Kevin and Kip said, the joint ditch work in Blue Earth and Faribault Counties with the, in June 22nd, and then we had I and Vance, we had our, with the sheriffs and the officers, with sheriffs and the county attorney, Thursday to the 23rd, and then had, I had a partners for affordable housing in the afternoon, and then a Township Officer meeting that evening. And then the following week, we had, I had the, wasn't much, we did have our MEPO, had a, implied people to comment period on our 2023-26 tip, Transportation Improvement Plan, and then review those. There's a couple of meetings there, and then, yep, Department Head meetings the following on the July 6th, and then had the, yeah, that was really all that, we got slowed up pretty fast, yeah. And then, yeah, till today, board meeting, and we had, of course, Julianne and the new employee group, and yep, and so that concludes my report. Yeah, so, welcome again, Julianne, and I guess...
Oh, goes to recess.
Yeah. Motion to recess?
Second.
Second? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or recessed. All right.
And that was your first meeting.